Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. Please give it up for Winter Salam. It is a cold day in New York, but the sun is shining in Harlem. Good morning, good afternoon. Thank you all for joining us today. My name is Kyle Ishmael. It is my pleasure, it is my honor, to be a part of this event today, to be a part of this movement, to be a part of this campaign. I'd like to take a quick moment to recognize, I don't know, see where he's at, Mr. Jordan Wright, campaign manager, Dr. Yusef Salam is back. We appreciate your patience. We again appreciate everybody coming out. We know it's a very cold day, but this is a very special moment for the community. In that vein, I'd like to call up Imam Talib Abdul Rashid to bless us this afternoon.
Good afternoon. Peace be on you all, Sanaa Wa Eka. So those of you from Brooklyn and other countries, Harlem, and the Queens and the rest of New York City, walking to the world's most famous African village, otherwise known as Harlem. We want to take a moment to offer a moment of prayer. Can I ask, please, Reverend Conrad Tiller to come up and stand with me, please? You know how we do it in the village. We always want to begin our events with prayer, and we always want to reflect the multi-faith nature of our village, which is in fact reflective of the multi-faith nature of the African continent itself. So I want to pass the night to Reverend Tiller, ask him to say a word of prayer, and then I'll follow him up, and then we go right ahead.
Thank you, brother Imam. Let us pray. Great God, we thank you for this gathering today. We thank you that you would bless us to be in this place at this time, to witness what we are seeing. Great God, we thank you for those from the Harlem community over the decades that have gone this way, that have paid the price, that have inspired, have uplifted, have struggled for the elevation of your people. And we thank you for this son of Harlem that will continue that tradition and embark upon this mighty journey. We ask you, oh God, that you gird up his lawns. We ask that you put your whole armor around him. We ask that you give him the strength and the intestinal fortitude to run this race on behalf of this community. And, oh God, we ask that you don't allow him to run this race in vain. Finally, God, we are grateful for the diversity of this village. We're grateful for all faiths, all colors, and national origins and backgrounds. And Lord, we thank you for such a time as this, that you would produce a young man that is uniquely qualified to speak on behalf of these people. This is our prayer and our hope. In your name we pray.
In the name of Allah, the merciful and compassionate God, Almighty Allah, we thank you for having brought all of us together today. We thank you, oh you of the most beautiful names, those who called you Almighty God, those who called you Jahd, those who called you Yahweh the Holy, those of us who are Muslims who called you Allah. You are who you are, Creator of the heavens and the earth and all things created between you. We ask you to bless this event this morning, this afternoon, and we ask you to bless our son, the son of Sharif, the one who has been prepared for this moment and in whom we have confidence, that he will represent us in leadership to the benefit of our community, even as others circle above our community like vultures, wanting to come in and to set up another agenda that is not in the benefit of our community. So we thank you. Blessings again. Bless all of those who have come out in all of these scenes. We pray in your most sacred name, Ameen and Ameen. Do we have Bishop Darren Ferguson in the house? Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure at this time to welcome up, and in fact, if you can have the whole family join the matriarch of this Harlem family, I'm going to welcome up Mr. Jerome Sala. Do we have Bishop Darren Ferguson in the house?
Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure at this time to welcome up, and in fact, if you can have the whole family join the matriarch of this Harlem family, I'm going to welcome up Mr. Jerome Sala. Do we have Bishop Darren Ferguson in the house? Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure at this time to welcome up, and in fact, if you can have the whole family join the matriarch of this Harlem family, I'm going to welcome up Mr. Jerome Sala.
Yes, yes, and I'm still working on possibly having more. This is just a little bit of what's coming in our future. You know, it's been a wonderful, wonderful moment at this particular time. We have come through some very trying experiences in our past, and we're moving forward. And we are ever thankful that a lot of those experiences that we've had have assisted in the growth of our children and of our family members and our extended family members. I still see some of our extended people in the audience. They are just back there taking a moment. Hi, all of you. You know, but it takes a lot to come up and be recognized in this group, particularly when you have a whole bunch of children, and a lot of the children are shy, and you know, they don't know what to do in this type of situation. Just stand around and show their love. But we've gone through a hard time, and we're hoping to push past the hard times. With my sons, my daughters, my grandchildren, and the children that are coming, we really have done well with the Most High Allah and are in God's grace. Because no matter what happens, our army has been formed. We have more children in our family now. We could do a baseball team. But part of that team and part of that struggle is also bringing them to a point where they can stand and enjoy the justice that is due us. See, another one of my family members just came in back there. How you doing, family member over there? See, I told you a lot of people didn't want to come up. They want to be shy. But Yusef and Ayesha and Sharif have always been a very strong and important part of my life, and they have given me a lot of strength to be able to stand through and go through a lot of what I had to do being an unprepared mother. Many of us have to go through a lot of stuff, and it's not easy as you do these things. But we do it because we have to. We do it because if we didn't do it, who would? And we also do it because we love our children, we love our families, and we want to keep them strong and healthy. I am very pleased to be here today and to know that Yusef has decided to move forward with his life, and not only move forward with the help of himself, but move forward to help others. I remember when I went up to this place called Harlem Valley many years ago, when he was incarcerated. And he said to me, as I spoke with him, and said, "Yusef, there's a group of people who are going to be coming in here to support you." And he said, "Mom, I'll be all right, but these kids in here need some help. They need some help." Those kids in there were being locked out for 23 hours, and they were small children, all underage children. There were children who were not receiving any visits from anybody while they were incarcerated. There were children who would be accused of things they did do and accused of things they didn't do and couldn't get any help while they were behind bars, because it was only one embolism to represent all the children. And for those of you who don't know, the embolism was the attorney that represented people who were incarcerated. So we had to restructure what we were doing and start reaching out and trying to help. Thank you, son. Your sons and daughters and family members are so helpful. I didn't know the mic was that far back and that you all were even hearing what I was saying. But in any event, I'm going to talk louder now, just in case the mic isn't working. But when he told us that we started working on behalf of the children who were incarcerated, and while we were working on the children incarcerated, it brings me to this moment, because now I see we've gone full circle. So not only am I working on issues related to justice and all types of things as an advocate, as I've been doing for so, so many years, now my son, Yusef, has taken on this mantle, and he is saying to the world, "I'm going to take over for my mom if I need to." I'm going to be the one pushing for justice for this community. I have been and seen what the community needs from my experiences, and I'm going to put that experience on the table so that people in the community can benefit from all of what I have learned through the time I was a child, through the time I was incarcerated, through the time I was freed, because some of those issues that were relevant at that time are still relevant today. And he is going to be the one to help us solve some of these problems. I don't want to lie to you and say he's going to do everything, but some of this stuff he's going to do. I just need you all to give him a chance to show you he can do it, and he can. With your support, with your backing, and with your consideration, we need you to vote for Yusef Salaam, because you want a change to be made. You want to see the change. When Yusef and I walk up and down these streets of Harlem, people come up to us and they says nothing, nobody is doing nothing for us. They feel left out of the equation. Yusef can change that, because he knows what the equation is. He knows how it feels to be left out. He knows how it feels to be brought in. He is the man Harlem needs at this moment to help things move forward and for people in Harlem to feel that they have someone that's backing, not just one community of Harlem, but Harlem as a whole. Vote for Yusef Salaam, because he is your man. I would say, Yusef Salaam, vote for him because he's my son, but I'm not going to say that. Vote for him because he's your man for this moment, and he's going to change stuff for this moment, and he's going to be the key to our success and forward-moving in this time. Thank you so much.
That's my mama. That's my sister. That's my brother. That's my wife. These are my children. I got my cousins here. I got some supporters here. I got a whole vast of children. I got my good friend. That's the big in the house. I don't know if you understand how magnanimous this moment is. This moment was written before I was born. This moment right here, right now, when you know who you are, when you know where you are, when you know why you are, when you know what you are, and in the era of mental health, we have to know how we are. And so to be joined with the Harlem family and folks from near and far, I salute you. I thank you. Thank you. I'm going to jump right in and just grab some notes, because I didn't want to add in too much. I didn't want to freestyle too much. Oh great, hey. We enter this sacred space at this sacred time to do your will. Let me magnify and extol you and show the world what you have gifted me, because there is no creator besides you. God is so amazing that he allowed me to grow through prison. It wasn't a journey that I would have chosen for myself, because as we are reminded in my great book, it says, "All roads lead to God, but some roads don't go straight." Everything that happened to me, everything that happened to us, and some of my younger children weren't even born yet to even experience the nightmare that we were awakened to. But we are here now. We are here now to try the new path forward, and with you behind me, we can move mountains. I was in prison when I remembered reading. I remember reading this. It just happens to be a book that might be one of the award-winning, continuously winning awards. I'm not trying to shamelessly plug the Punching the Air book. It's my first foray into the publishing space. But in here, I want to start by sharing just a few words. This is from African American Two, the chapter called African American Two. While we shout, talk, and whisper, Immanuel writes on her postboard, "The Thirteenth Amendment." The Thirteenth Amendment. Then she writes more words. "Indektu Banu nods. Yours should know this," he says. Yours should really understand this. "The Constitution of the United States of America, Thirteenth Amendment, Section One." I couldn't believe this. I read this in prison, y'all. "Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude except as a punishment for crime whereof the party shall have been duly convicted shall exist within the United States or any place subject to its jurisdiction." I thought slavery was abolished. Turns out slavery is alive and sick. But that's not even the crux of the matter. Do you really understand what brings me here before you today? Section two. Congress shall have power to enforce this article through appropriate legislation. In the halls of power, we have been crying out for equity. We have been crying out for justice, not for some of us, but for all of us. Because when I look at the kaleidoscope of the human family, what I see is that if we all go together, we'll go far. If you want to go slow, go by yourself, because you'll realize that, just like in a marathon, when you're tired, my wife can tell you. She runs marathons. I think she's done about five. She tells me to come out there with her, but I'm not running. I'm a speaker. But when you look around and you're tired and you're thirsty and you're ready to give up, you see your brothers and your sisters running there with you, and encourage you to keep on going. To just put one foot in front of the other, just one foot, and by the time you look back, you'll be near a half a century of lived experiences. I'll be 49. Insha'Allah, my wife said it. And you know, you have to say, "If it be the will of God." Because you cannot will unless Allah also will. And just, you know, maybe 23 days. Now I share this wonderful day. It's not even my birthday anymore, because I share this wonderful day with my young man here, Yusef Salaam Jr. And so now it's his birthday. If you want to go to Legoland, that's we going to Legoland. It is what it is, you know. Peace and blessings, home. Peace and blessings, father. Thank you all for coming out today. Today, we begin the work to change the direction of our community. And I want to offer a special thanks, a special, special thanks to Wilma Brown Phillips. I just need to shout her name out on the Fat Times Globe for being tyrannous in her work to galvanize the people, to let them know I am a candidate. And I will be, I will be the next city council president. My people, my people, I am not here today to talk to you about politics, because as you know, I'm not a politician. I didn't come up through that. I'm not here to do a deep dive into all of the policies we need to stop the abuse of our beloved Harlem, because we all know that we need a lot of help, and we know that we need it now. My people, I'm here today to talk to you about our community, what we must do to ensure that the vibrancy of our village is never dead. That's why I'm here today. What happened to us? This is a real question. You know, when I look around, and I've been traveling the world, I couldn't believe it. When I was coming out of Somalia, it was so much poverty, but the people were happy. I left Somalia where you had to drive sometimes six hours on unpaid roads to help people and deliver water to their villages. And when I left Somalia, I went to Dubai. They have lush gardens in the desert. I'd never seen anything like that before. What happened to us? When I look at Harlem, I realize that legends once walked our streets, providing us with leadership and hope, legends who could reach back and celebrate while our history, celebrate our history, while creating a vision for a better tomorrow. Legends like the great Adam Clayton Powell Jr., legends like the lion of Linux, Charlie Rangel, and David Patterson. We have lost leaders who were connected to the soul of our community. We stopped investing in our young people and stopped teaching them the value of the culture that we created. We forgot the reality that nothing is given to us. It was earned over generations, our Harlemites coming together as one to say that here in the center of black culture in America, we refuse to sit back and just be victims of systemic oppression. My people, Harlem is at the crossroads. Harlem is at the crossroads. We can't afford any more missteps. That's how crucial this time is. You know, sometimes when I think about politics, you know, in our, in our community, we have a saying, "Politricks." You know, Bob Marley, what did he say? He said, "He said the universities are graduating thieves and murderers." When we needed the most help in the 70s and the 80s, they enacted a war on drugs, and that was really a war on us. People got football numbers in terms of time. They got football numbers, but when it crossed over the tracks, they opened up the Betty Ford Clinics of America. When I look at some of the things that Harlem needs today, I'm right, I live right smack dab at the crossroads of the world. And for those who don't know... And for those who don't know, that's 125th year. That's what it's called, the crossroads of the world. And what I see is painful. There was a report out not too long ago that said, when you enter your house, you should take your shoes off. Because they started talking about all of the ill effects that could plague you if you just walk around your house as if you were in your house and everything is okay. And when I step out of my door and come downstairs, my Harlem streets look very different than the streets downtown. We have to step over spit. We have to step over excrement. We might even have to step over the modern day crack bars. Cause that's what's going on in our community. We must get back to elevating leaders who are both for the people and out the people. This is not politics issue. This is something different. There exists existential crisis right at our door that threaten the very health and survival of our community. There are no opportunities for young people. There's a lack of affordable housing. There are no jobs that elevate us financially. And no care for our seniors or mental health services for the most vulnerable of us. This is what, this is what we're seeing and what we're experiencing. As many of you that you know, when I was 15, I gotta go there. When I was 15, not only would we run over by the spike wheels of justice, but this one individual, became the president of these United States. Donald Trump took out a full-page ad calling for the state to kill us. Placing a bounty on our heads. We weren't supposed to survive. And if we did survive, we were supposed to be given a social death. But that full-page ad that Donald Trump took out examined the color of our skin and not the content of our character. In a country where you're supposed to be innocent until proven guilty, they saw the color of our skin and said, guilty, guilty, guilty. It would have been okay if Donald Trump would have taken out a full-page ad after we were found to be innocent. Standing right at my side, my mama and my family. Taking out a full-page ad apologizing. Because see, the residue that that left, the residue is what we're really talking about. You ask the question, how could something like this happen in these United States? It's because of the system of oppression that we have been forced into through which we have been surviving. I was unjustly tried at 15, convicted at 16, and lost seven crucial years of my youth to the criminal system of injustice. That's what I call it. I wanna perhaps, through this effort, be able to call it the criminal justice system. Yes, indeed. But even if you call it the criminal legal system, even if you say it slow enough, it almost tells on itself. Criminal legal system. I'll never get those years back. I know what it's like to be handcuffed, to be dragged through the court system and then to be thrown into prison. I know what that's like. To have my youth stolen and my family questioned and my childhood denied. And while I often imagine how different my life would have been without that experience, my time in prison has allowed me to travel the world telling my story. I've been out there inspiring hope in communities just like ours to be the change that they seek in the world. I have lived in the silence of a prison cell, but found in there a calling for justice. Derived primarily from my faith, derived from our heritage and from the love of my family and friends. My people, when I'm asked about how I have been able to be better and not bitter, I tell people that it was you. It was you, the village of Harlem. You wrapped your arms around me and supported me through my crisis. A personal crisis that was rooted in the racism found in our city and in our country. Today, as I look around at the crisis we face in our community right now, I find affordable housing as a crisis. I find education as a crisis. I find public safety as a crisis. And I find mental health as a crisis. It's clear to me now that the time for me to provide for my, for my people in 2023, the time for me to provide for my people in 2023, as you lifted me up when I came home from prison at just 23 years young. Some people follow the terminology. But the beauty of being here at this time of 2023 and the beauty of being able to be looking at when I came home from prison is magnificent. It's time for me to inspire a hope in our youth who don't see education as a pathway to better life. Our forefathers like Mount Lemax, the great El Hajj Malik Shabazz, may Allah be pleased with him and elevate his status in paradise. He taught us that education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today. He also taught us that the power of the mind is liberating. It frees us to think, but it also frees us to act as we work together to build a stronger, better community. It's time for me to inspire. It's time for me to inspire hope in the family who must deal with the slum load. Because leaving their apartment may mean that they have to leave Harlem. It's time for me to light a fire in our community that motivates us to don't to demand that those in power address these systemic barriers that keep so many of us from thriving and not just surviving. It's time, my people, it's time. I'm here today to announce my candidacy for this New York City's ninth district. I am so relieved. Listen. This is a coming out one. This is a coming out one. I am here to announce my candidacy for this district, the ninth district, central Harlem, because it is time. Listen, listen. We need it. We need change. We need, we need quantifiable change. Uncompromising change. Unapologetic change. We must elect leaders with integrity to do what's right. Leaders who aspire to help to protect our community. Leaders who will fight for the most vulnerable of us and clasp the hands of the young and the old as we walk together in a future that recognize that Harlem is and has always been our home. As your next leader. As your next leader. I commit to you today that I will bring the voice of Harlem to the hallways of power downtown. I will hold city government accountable and even ensure services are more accessible and impactful. I will work to make sure that our streets and our parks are safe places for our families and our children to gather. I will demand that we no longer criminalize mental health and that we address all of those issues, all of those disparities that we desperately need. I will protect our local businesses so that they can thrive in our community. I will ensure that they, that any, this is crucial, by the way. I will ensure that any development that comes into our district must advance the interests of those who have lived through the blight, through the pain, within the margins of life. And I just wanna repeat that one more time because it sounds good. And it's what we need, right? I will make sure that any development that comes into Harlem advances the interests of those who have lived through the blight, advances the interests of those who have lived through the pain, and advances the interests of those who have lived within the margins of life. Harlem is great because of everyday men and women who built our village into the center of black art through commerce and culture known around the world. Now, this is not piggybacking off of anything that was negative. But when we wanna change things, we spark positivity there. It's time to make Harlem great again. It's time to make Harlem great again. And it is I, Dr. Yusuf Salam, son of Sharon Salam, and one of the exonerated fathers, who stands here today, ready, willing, and able. I'm ready, willing, and able to represent you to inspire the next generation of leaders who will bring the essence of greatness back to our village and to ensure that those who have suffered through the lows benefit the most from our future highs. My people, my people. Today begins Harlem's campaign for change. And I look forward to working with you as we lead our neighborhood into a new era of glory. This era of glory is gonna be one that truly provides liberty and justice for all. Before we open up, I need to share with you a poem that I wrote while I was in Clinton Denim. I was walking to the mess hall. And all of a sudden, my body felt like a vessel through which words were being poured into. So much so that I had to ask one of my comrades for a pen. And one of those hard prison napkins, I wrote the words, Venus and Mars. This is the planet Earth, right? We on the planet Earth? I'll meet you in between Venus and Mars. In between Venus and Mars is the center of our attraction. Of those connected to the stars, hardly a fraction. It behooves man to work for the day when this will all end. Life is mortal, so follow the ways of those who have been heaven sent. Awaken and receive that which will give you life. Or remain horizontal and never begin to flatter. For the solution, I'll descend from amongst the stars. And I'll meet you in between Venus and Mars. I just wanna thank you. I wanna offer you peace from the owner of all peace, mercy from the owner of all mercy, and blessings from the owner of all blessings to be upon you and your families forever. Yes, indeed. I am thankful to be here. I am here, Ken.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you, Yusuf, for the wonderful speech. Thank you, everybody. We're having a good one. Thank you so much. To everybody in this room, if you wanna donate time, energy, dollars, whatever you have, the resources are in the bag to do so. Thank you so much. Talk to you all soon.